All right. Good evening. My name is Burton Flint and I'm the new Chair of the Planning Board, and I'd like to thank you for joining the Planning Board's second public forum on proposed zoning changes to the Thro Depot Business District. This forum is a step in the process that began with another public forum almost a year ago to develop a vision for the depot, followed by numerous planning board meetings, and now we're at the stage of seeking your input on proposed zoning changes. We're fortunate to have had this process led by Chris Kuchel, Principal Planner at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, who's worked with the town planning staff and the planning board to advance this proposal, and Chris will be leading the presentations tonight. This is not a formal planning board meeting or hearing, rather, it's a forum designed to generate active discussion and feedback on the proposed zoning changes. Chris will present on some elements of the proposed changes, and then we'll all divide up into breakout groups to have discussions. It's looking like we're probably have about four or five breakout rooms, and then we'll reconvene. Chris will present the rest of the proposal, and then we'll again have breakout discussions. This is the Planning Board's first, hopefully, last attempt at a public forum with breakout rooms. It's virtual, so we appreciate your patience should we encounter any technical difficulties or assigning people to rooms. And with that, Chris, please take it from here.
Hi, everybody. It's nice to see so many people joining us tonight. I'm going to share my screen. All right. Kind of assume everybody can see this now, and if not, just let me know. So. Yeah, as was stated, what we're going to do is kind of something that's a little bit different from probably what you've kind of been used to in other of these virtual events where I'm going to give a presentation, and then we're going to hopefully it's going to work, where we'll go into individual breakout sessions. And the reason that we're doing that is because we're hoping it actually helps engender a better conversation that can be sort of done within this sort of standard format where everybody's in the same room. So we'll talk for about 20 minutes in that breakout session about some of the topics as it relates to this potential zoning. Then we'll come back and I'll present enough some on some more topics, and then we'll break out again, and then we'll come back for some report outs and quickly discuss the next steps. So this project is something where what we've doing is essentially first trying to develop a vision for the Thro Depot area, and then discuss how do we actually implement that vision? What are the recommendations? And in particular, we've been focused on one aspect in what I would consider kind of the most critical aspect of those recommendations, and that's the zoning. So zoning is sort of those that regulatory framework to help implement the vision. So here shows kind of this the schedule that we've been working on. It's been about a two year process, and that's kind of typical for a project of this nature. And as I noted, we sort of have split it into two parts. So the first part was more on the vision. So what do we want to see in the future for this neighborhood? And then the other part, and there was some overlap, was how do we actually get there? And in particular, focused on the zoning. And I won't go through all of them, but you can see we've had a number of meetings throughout this process. So it's been very much an iterative process, and we have been seeking to get as much public input and incorporate as much input as possible throughout the process. The ultimate goal, I should also mention, is to actually have the zoning hopefully be brought towards town meeting in the fall. So this whole project really started goes back to your comprehensive plan, what a lot of communities call a master plan. So the master plan sort of at that 30,000 foot long term plan for your town, I mean, it had a number of goals and strategies that were relevant, such as renewing and improving Concord's various village centers. Business revitalization, thinking about housing and the needs to provide a range of opportunities for people at different stages of life and different income levels, but also, and importantly, to really preserve the character that makes Concord such a special place within our region. This is a kind of a diagram of that study area in the area today. It's actually a fairly small area in terms of the way villages are New England style villages are about 15 acres. So that's, you know, about 15 football fields if you're kind of looking for some sort of guidance on what that would be like. And you can kind of see from the from this diagram, there's a lot of pavement in this area, a lot of impervious surface, and not a lot of buildings. And it kind of suggests that in this area that there's a fair amount of opportunity. So the process that we've gone through, sort of, there are two parts. One part is the sort of the analytical aspect of it. And this is where I won't go through this, but we've done throughout the process where we've looked at various existing conditions, such as what are the heights? What's the density? What are some of the positive attributes? What are some of the challenges, et cetera? So we use that, and then we also use very much the kind of community feedback. And so this is what feels probably like a lifetime ago to many of us was our first forum way back before we had before COVID. So we had this was an open house style forum where people went to the various stations and provided feedback, and we took all that feedback and kind of supplemented some of the more quantitative aspects that we looked at to help first develop the vision. So that vision, we developed a vision statement which sort of articulates where what where this neighborhood is hopefully going over the next kind of 15 to 20 years, as well as principles that kind of support that vision. And so that's all available on the project's website. And then the other thing we did, and this is what I'm showing the example of here, was we took that vision and tried to give one example of how that vision could potentially manifest itself. And so this is an example, looking at the Crosby Marketplace. Just want to emphasize, this is in no way a development proposal. There's no, no plans for any redevelopment here. This is just kind of a test to show potentially what the vision could look like. So we use that as a basis, and we did a few things. One thing we want to see is what is even the potential for development in this area, especially when you take into account things it's for parking and open space, like how much could you actually develop here? And, you know, in this case, and this is the largest parcel in the area, I we're talking in the kind of neighborhood of dozens of units, not hundreds. So it's fairly small. But we wanted to kind of look at that. We also use this this work to help inform aspects that would go into the zoning, such as zoning and the other component, which is the design guidelines. And so one of the things that people seem to kind of like through the process, and then how does it manifest things such as pitched roofs and things, kind of the scale of about three stories and things of that nature? So that's kind of a recap of everything we've been doing and the vision specifically. So now I'm going to turn the attention to talking about the zoning, and if we're going to break out the zoning into a few different pieces. So first of all, for people who maybe are not quite as familiar, you know, what is zoning? So zoning, it's the regulatory framework. It sets the rules and the requirements for redevelopment. This might include things are how tall can you build a building? What are the setbacks? What are the uses that are allowed within this area? Is there affordable housing? And how much should there be? The zoning can't make a landowner do anything to their property. It's also not a development proposal. So I just want to be kind of very clear on that. It really essentially allows things to occur potentially. The other point that I just want to make about the zoning, which I think sometimes trips people up, that you already have zoning for this area. In this case, there's already a thorough business district. So the choice isn't necessarily between proposed zoning and nothing. It's proposed zoning and what is there today? And so that's kind of what we did was we started from the existing thorough business district and tried to kind of check, could that meet the actual vision? And if not, what changes are needed or suggested to help achieve that vision? So start with the uses. Really, the overall goal of an area that kind of emerged in an area like this was that. It's helpful to be flexible and allow a wide variety of uses. So there are some uses that would just not be compatible in a New England village, like a, you know, pollution emitting factory, for example. So that's the type of thing that we want to make sure is prohibited. And I feel like that's the way that we should approach these types of areas. I mean, if there's a good reason to not allow it, then you shouldn't allow it. But if not, then generally, we should probably be flexible to allow the market to sort of do its work. And overall, the goal, what we're looking to is to create a walkable and mixed use district. That's kind of the, you know, what the classic New England village is. So we kind of took the entire table of uses that is in your zoning code, and we looked at what is there today and what would we like to allow? And kind of the playing boards recommendation was that if we look at what is allowed, not necessarily what is there, but what's allowed in the West Concord Village District, that that's a good starting place. And so that's what we've done. The other key aspect to the zoning in terms of the uses is what is mixed use? And Concord has a term called the combined business residence. That is essentially your mixed use. The kind of issue that we have come across is there are a number of sort of provisions attached to this use, and they were likely hindering any sort of redevelopment under this combined business residence. So you already have it within West with Thro Depot, but we think that there's the it's just unlikely to actually be implemented because of what there is today. So with the planning board, we've had a number of meetings to discuss this one definition, essentially. I think it's probably up to about five or so meetings where we've tackled different aspects of this. And so this table really summarizes what some of the provisions are today, what some of the issues are that we found, and what some of the proposed solutions would be. So I'll run through these quickly. First is there's a requirement that the mixed use development must be mixed use buildings. And, you know, what we've sort of found through the visioning process, what people seem to care about is that along the street edge itself, that's where people really want to ensure that we have these sort of vibrant types of uses, like restaurants and stores and whatnot. If you have a deep parcel and there aren't too many, what happens back there is a little bit less important. It would be harder in many cases to actually put commercial back there. And so the change that we're suggesting is for mixed use to allow it to be mixed use could be on multiple buildings as opposed to having to be a single building, with the caveat that along the street itself, we want to ensure that that ground floor is its commercial uses. A second issue has to do with the required deed restricted affordable units. You know, at MAPC, and I hope for most of you listening tonight, are supporters of increasing the amount of affordable housing we have in our in your neighbor, in your town, as well as in the region, we have an affordable housing crisis. And so we strongly support this notion that you already have. But we're afraid that it's it's so strict that it actually is making development financially and feasible, especially for small projects. When you get to larger projects, that it tends to be sort of an economies of scale to allow for more affordable units. So today, for all developments of four or more units, 20% of those must be affordable. We've had a number of conversations about this, and right now, what we're sort of proposing would be that that threshold goes up to projects of six or more units, and that 15% of those would be affordable. We think that would make it much more financially feasible, especially in this part of town where you have a lot of smaller, likely smaller projects. The final piece has to do with open space. What's the way it's written today is extremely high and much higher than you would tend to see sort of in a New England village style area. And so what we're recommending is something that is sort of more along the lines of what we see as the best practice, which is 15% where there's residential development. And then the planning board would have the opportunity, the ability to potentially reduce that in exchange for kind of mutually agreed upon offsite public realm improvements. So that's kind of uses. And then with the uses are requirements for parking. And so I'll just address this one quickly, and then we're going to break out into our first our first breakout session. So in terms of parking, a couple of principles. One is that an area such as Thro Depot probably should have different parking requirements from other parts of town, given the nature of the fact that it is intended to be walkable, as well as the fact that there's a commuter rail station right, right there. It tends to be different from other areas that are not of that nature. So we wanted to require, set the parking requirements at what are kind of emerging as best practices. And the goal is to provide sufficient parking, but not excessive parking, which adds to cost and frankly, can just make projects infeasible. And also, mixed use developments can take advantage of a concept of shared parking. So for example, if you are a resident, many residents will be leaving during the day with their car, that that space could be used for an office worker. And whereas the office worker would be probably closed at night, that space could then be used for the residents. And so there are opportunities to take this, what is set at this table that we are proposing, and then potentially further reduce it through a special permit. You know, again, if the playing board thinks that the parking needs would be met. And so you can see here, it's broken up by commercial and mixed use versus residential use. And so we have, you know, one bedroom, we have one space per unit. Once you get up to two bedrooms, it's one and a half spaces, et cetera. So you can, you can see, take a second and read what those are set at. Okay, so that's kind of the first batch of, you know, of the presentation. The one thing before we go into breakouts that I would just kind of recommend, so for one thing, the way this I believe will work is you'll get a little notice on your screen asking you to join. I believe you have to click join, and you'll be assigned to a breakout session. Members of the planning board will then have to kind of shuffle themselves, I believe, into different rooms, and then they will kind of facilitate a conversation. So we'll have about 20 minutes to kind of discuss the issues that I raised. I would recommend, to the extent that people are willing and able to turn on their cameras, that tends to help kind of have a conversation. But either way, just please do participate, because this is, you know, your chance to kind of talk about these issues.
Excuse me, Chris. And this is probably a question. This is Kate McInney from the planning board. And we haven't seen this for a little while, and I have some questions I'm really eager to ask, but I need to ask Elizabeth and Burton whether this not being a real meeting of planning work, may I ask Chris some questions?
This is just a public forum to to get the input from the public. And then at the planning board's next meeting, depending on what's on the schedule, then the board will have a complete discussion about what they heard at this forum. So there there won't be any discussion amongst the planning board members about what, you know, is being heard tonight.
So the answer is that I should not ask a question.
If you have a procedural question, but not, not a question about the, you know, the topic where it's going to have a conversation with the board. I mean, during your breakout session, you know, if you have a question, you know, have it be part of the breakout session, but not part of the main session.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'm going to, I guess the Zoom administrator will be.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. So I'm going to set up, I think, seven breakout rooms, and I will be in the main room along with Elizabeth Hughes. So if you have any questions, just stay on, and we can help you guide you in, and just allow a little bit of time to get into the breakout room, and then for the planning board members and facilitators to adjust to their rooms.
So Amanda, Megan, and Monroe, Chris is assigning you.
Thank you. Just give me a minute.
Hi, sorry, I joined late. Are you putting us in breakout groups?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great.
Thank you. And David, you'll be assigned as well. So as people are coming in. Chris will be assigning you to a breakout room that's already in session, but. You're muted, Chris.
Sorry. Do you want to pause recording or keep it rolling?
Well, it doesn't, doesn't do any good to record while we're.
Share my screen again, and we'll continue with the with the presentation. I hope maybe if anybody from the plane board, from our perspective, our room, I thought that it was a great conversation. 20 minutes felt like to me the right amount of time. So assuming there are no issues, well, we'll continue with that. But if there was anything that came up, just let me know, and we can see if we can do something a little bit different.
I think it worked fine, Chris. Thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, so now we're going to talk about two other aspects as it relates to to the regulations. One is the dimension of regulations. So this is actually governing the actual built form to various degrees of what could be built here. And so we, again, we had just a few of the principles that I kind of jotted down that came to me that sort of emerged from from the visioning work was we wanted it to be compatible with the scale of Concord. But we also wanted to be sort of, sort of allow for sufficient development to make projects financially feasible. Another thing that emerged was that the character of both what's there today, as well as just the streets themselves of Sudbury Road is different from Thro Street, and that might sort of end with lead to sort of different kind of solutions as it relates to the to the zoning. I talked a little bit before about kind of that this concept of vibrancy and what those uses are and how that's kind of important along the roads of a kind of a business district. And generally, what that means is sort of some type of ground level commercial building. But then that there's that opportunity for the deep parcels, and there aren't too many of them, but maybe potentially to allow for a little bit greater height in this area. And people, you know, it'll be interesting to hear what people say tonight, but from the process today, people have felt fairly comfortable with that, as long as sort of where when you're when you're on the street itself, that that larger development doesn't sort of kind of affect the character of when you're on the in the roadway. And so this is an example along Sudbury Road is that same diagram that's now just kind of zoomed in, but to sort of show that, you know, separate roads are where you have kind of higher traffic and higher speed cars and vehicles, and where the existing buildings are, this is an opportunity where it might be appropriate to have a front yard setback where buildings are, and that provides a little bit of a buffer. But it also kind of critically provides an opportunity to create additional seating, and that was one of the top themes that sort of emerged for this area, which is a big challenge is a desire for more sort of public open space. And so it's a difficult thing to achieve, but I think there are opportunities to to kind of have the private sector play a role in providing that. And this is just sort of one of those examples. So generally speaking, in terms of dimensional standards, what people I think were generally felt comfortable was three story buildings. We want to have, people also generally wanted pitched roofs as opposed to flat roofs. And so 38 feet sort of will generally allows you to kind of get to that, get to that number of floors and and kind of achieve that without having to be a flat roof. Couple of the other best practices that sort of have emerged in these types of things that traditionally zoning doesn't hasn't really kind of regulated this, but I think increasingly, people are paying more attention to design. And so things like what is the ground floor height? And for commercial, we generally want a fairly substantially tall build, tall first ground floor, so 12 feet would be the minimum. Another aspect is how much of the ground floor has windows? And that's another thing that we've included here, and 60% is sort of what we tend to see for for commercial buildings. The other aspect is how wide a building is, the building length here that faces the road. Overly large buildings can just kind of add to sort of that monotony and can, and so we've kept that at 100 feet. But and then either way, when you have a long building after 40 feet, there are ways that we have what we're calling vertical modulation elements, and I'll explain what that is in a second.
Chris, before you go off this slide. Could you just highlight the things that are are new? I think the design strictly designed things are all new, but anything that's a change from what exists presently allowed, which perhaps just building height?
Um, yes, I can't recall exactly, to be honest, off the top of my head, what your existing height is. I believe it's three stories, but I don't know if it's if that's the number of feet that it is. We have some good examples of some recent buildings that have been 38 feet that I think kind of fit perfectly in a place like Thro Depot, and that's, that's where we established that height. Right now, most of many of the the existing Thro Depot dimensional regulations are actually almost non-existent. There is a lot of flexibility in a lot of areas where maybe we sort of don't want flexibility, where we wanted to find it, and then there's a lot of, and then there are some aspects that we have needed to change, and I think height might be a slight change.
To answer that question, currently, the height limit is 35 feet.
Thank you.
Thank you. I thought we went up a slight bit, so that helps. Working sort of in concert with the dimensional standards are as a separate document that we've developed that are design guidelines. So this is not part of the zoning itself, and actually does it can be adopted by the planning board. But we've written it in a way that it works very closely with the zoning. And in fact, in the zoning criteria for actual approval of project is based on part of following these design guidelines. Another comment that kind of emerged was, you know, we might want to the town might want to do something for the other villages. And so that this is designed that this could be expanded and include the other villages as appropriate in the future. And so the way it's set up, we kind of, you know, a developer who's reading the zoning would be directed to look at these design guidelines. The first section just kind of talks about the gives an introduction, the applicability, and then it reiterates the actual vision statement so that somebody kind of has that holistic view of what, what does the community envision for this area? And that can help hopefully help inform their development plans. And then it's broken into different chapters, and it's fairly a fairly short document. But and I'm just going to give a few examples of some of the things that are included within these design guidelines. So I talked a bit already about this, the the front yard. So what's really critical is that where there is a building a setback from the sidewalk, its uses are generally what we call active uses. So that might be a plaza, it could be seating for that's associated with a restaurant or just general seating. I think the other kind of critical piece is what is not used within this front yard, and that's parking, really parking should be kind of put to the rear of buildings, and that's really what enhances the walkability of a neighborhood such as Thro Depot. And for people kind of can, I think, you know, as a motorist, we sometimes think about the most convenient, you kind of want the parking right there in front of you. But again, when you put yourself in the shoes of a pedestrian and just kind of imagine like where it's nice to walk along, it's nice walking along Thro Street as an example. And I think we can achieve that in other locations as well. Another aspect has to do with the way the building is oriented and sighted, generally sort of defining the edges of the public spaces, even if they're privately owned public spaces, oriented toward the street. even if they're privately owned, public spaces oriented toward the street and the architecture and the entrances, et cetera, will kind of all play a role in that. I mentioned heights, so this is kind of the proposed diagram that really helps explain in, in detail where a situation where I'm allowing for that fourth story could be appropriate and what that would be. And so what we've proposed is it has to be at least a hundred feet from the lot line back. You have to have another building that is, or essentially shielding that from, from the public way. And if you are abutting a residential district, that four stories can be no more than, has to be at least a hundred and twenty-five feet away from, from any residential district. And that's not a residential building, that's the actual district. So it actually increases from any residential structure if, if there happens to be any. And then these diagrams again just show some of the other things that are included in one of the chapters. So aspects such as how do we sort of break down visually any terms of any larger building? And on that, there was a number of sort of methods to sort of articulate the building so that in some ways almost reads as, as multiple buildings in, in some ways. As well as the diagram below has to do with sort of the way the building reads the, in terms of its horizontal modulation. And so generally, it should be sort of, think of a building as having a base, kind of the central portion, and then the top portion as sort of distinct areas. We provided some details when we say a percentage of glazing of sixty percent. Well, what does that actually mean? What, what are we measuring? And so in this case, it's between two and twelve feet above, above the ground. And then finally, what are the roofs that are allowed? What types of roofs are allowed within this area? And so that's, that's another thing that would be great to just get more feedback on. I, I recently completed a project in Ashland, and, and we've actually made some changes to this based upon their feedback, and so that might be appropriate here as well. Okay, so with that, I think I'll stop sharing my screen and we'll do the same, same routine. So I'll ask Chris, the Zoom administrator, to sort us all out, and we'll, we'll talk for another twenty minutes.
Yeah, I'll set that up now.
Scott, if you want to go ahead and mute.
All right. It looks like most of us are back now. Again, thank you for this, you know, I had a different group of people, but it was, it was another really strong conversation. So I just want to thank everybody for your participation tonight and kind of trying, what I think for a lot of us was, was something new. And hopefully you found that it worked better than kind of the standard format where all sixty of you would be in this one room trying to, to give comments. I think, Elizabeth, what we said was we're going to do some report outs now. But I will say it's a little bit challenging since it's at least changed every time. So I'm not exactly sure how you want to sort of run that. If, if the different planning board members want to give a couple highlights from, from what they observed, it might, might be one way to do so.
So I think we'll just run through the planning board members and town staff that might have been facilitate. Go through your, your hit list for the first breakout room, dealing with uses and parking. And then we'll have everybody run through again for the second breakout room and, and then we'll do a wrap up and next steps. So if Burton, if you don't mind.
Sure, I'll kick it off. So my quick note, I was not the note taker, but I jotted down just a few words. So session one, there is concern about traffic that increased density could cause additional traffic in an area that already has a lot of traffic with, especially with the train track running through and the backup sets creates. The comment was made that the overall plan seems very pro-development. And there were generally concerns about where does the parking go if you're allowing, you know, greater density of buildings? And, and what, what does that mean in terms of parking? And that comes to some feedback we got in the second session about impervious surfaces that I'll, I'll save for that. With that, I'll hand it to the next.
Next on my list is Andrew, Planning Board Member Andrew Boardman.
Yeah, the, the concerns that came out of the first session in, in particular became concerns about unintended consequences. If there was a change in zoning, would that eliminate what people consider to be useful services that are already being offered on these sites such as Crosby's and you know, those kind of things where if you're, you're presenting the opportunity to increase or change the use, does that then create ripples? And the ripples included, as stated before, traffic, parking concerns, you know, how these are calculated, where, where these numbers came from, what is half a car per unit? Why does that make sense if you're talking about a two-bedroom unit, those kinds of things? And then there was, the one thing I'll conclude with, there was generally a support for mixed use. As discussed, that it wasn't, it, it really didn't come down to a concern about, about what was being proposed, it was just how it was going to be implemented.
Great. Next on my list would be Planning Board Member Linda Miller.
Yes, I, I was in the same session with Andrew, but I think there were other, a couple of other things I might add. There were concerns about poor drainage in the area and overall how green space could be preserved and to deal with that as well. There was also questions about formula businesses and would this plan have any constraints with regard to what is available in Concord Center or in the district as well? And just echo again, the concerns with, with traffic and really having to do traffic studies before any specific projects could, could go in.
Yeah, I was, I was in that, I was in that breakout as well. I just wanted to add to what Linda said was, and maybe Chris can address this later. One thing that came up that was, I thought, a great question was giving an example of what off-site green space might look like within the Thorough Depot that, that came up as well.
Thank you. Next on my list is actually, Chris, I think you facilitated a breakout room as well, did you not?
I did, yeah. You know, I think what I would say is both sessions, or I guess we're focused on the first session, what was actually generally quite positive, I would say. There were some concerns about traffic that emerged in the second session, but the first one, I think people seem to very much support the idea of mixed-use development in this, in this area as a means. You know, we got into the nitty-gritty of the, the combined business residence. You know, in those provisions, and again, people seem to be kind of in, in agreement that the proposed changes to what you already have for this area makes sense. So I, I think that was kind of my main takeaways.
Great. Next on my list is the town's Public Information Officer, Erin Stevens. I don't know if you facilitated.
Actually, I would just add that, you know, some of the things that came up too that I noted were the desire for, you know, sustainability in all the different things that we're doing. Yeah, they like the mixed use. Looking at multi-level parking and parking auctions, making sure that there is parking available, but also keeping that sort of, you know, person scale as well. And spoke a little bit about sort of place baking and stuff like that, too.
Thank you. Next on my list is Planning Board Member Haley Orbital.
Um, yeah, so I think I was the only member in my room. Biggest topics were traffic and parking, especially questions around a kind of, I think, I guess they're half or some, some portion of Crosby's parking lot today is intended for commuter rail parking. And if that's going to go away, will that just exacerbate the problem of where commuter rail parking is going to go? And then, uh, you know, generally supportive of mixed use, but wanting to make sure that we really are going to get affordable housing, but also kind of workforce housing in, in, in the development. And then what else? Light pollution associated with parking and impact on the, the neighborhood. How does that go into the design guidelines or just questions around where, where is that, you know, where do we make sure we're addressing that? Is it zoning versus design guidelines? And I think that was most of the session one topic.
Great, thank you. Next is Planning Board Member Kate McAnaney.
Thanks, Elizabeth. I, I just want to appreciate everyone's comments tonight. It was really great to hear from everyone. Like my colleagues, there was, there's a huge emphasis on parking, traffic, and pedestrian safety. There is a concern with increasing the amount of traffic and changing the nature of the character of the area by changing the amount of traffic that's coming through. There's a concern with, as Haley mentioned, the train parking and wanting to understand how we may be changing the amount of parking available for commuters to take the train, which is something that we want people to be doing versus driving in a Boston. There was some discussion about how there's a lot of emphasis on the Crosby's lot, which seems to be more clear to folks like what the potential changes are there or how we'd be incentivizing different changes, but less so along Thorough Street. So there was just some questions about like what, what really are the incentives of the possibilities along Thorough Street? To that end, there was a desire for a table that shows the dimensional regulations and just showing what's proposed and then comparing that to what's existing. And also, there was an appreciation for the fact that people live behind the businesses on Thorough Street so that we should be aware, just not of, of the, the visual impacts and the streetscape design guidelines along Thorough Street, but also the fact that people who are living behind there in that residential neighborhood are going to be potentially impacted visually in terms of the way the building's designed and also light impacts from changes in parking or new light structures in a parking lot. There was a question on where, why we're proposing twelve-foot height for that first floor for the first story, and that it seemed disconsident with, with the way that the height limit, the way for, that we tend to design in Concord, too high. There's comments on just some of the illustrations that people are seeing, the massing and the scale of what, of the buildings that we're seeing are just quite shocking. And not, a disconsident with, with the scale that we're used to seeing in Concord and not something that's desirable. And then there is a concern about losing Crosby's because a lot of the illustrations show residential buildings or apartments or mixed-use buildings and the loss of a grocery store that a lot of folks depend on and also enjoy walking and biking too. And that if we're losing our grocery store, then we're going to have to be driving to other grocery stores that we don't want to in other towns. So that might be an unanticipated consequence of, of changing the zoning in that area. And I, I, I apologize if I'm missing anyone's comment, but I think that's it.
Thank you. And then we have the Director of Planning and Land Management, Marcia Rasmussen.
Everything that people have said was already expressed in, in my, my first breakout session. Pedestrian safety was, was a concern, not providing, there was no clear indication of the open space requirements. The fact that they felt there needed to be more open space, and again, the traffic and congestion and safety were, were paramount. But there was support for mixed-use development. Can I go on to the next, go to dimensional regulations?
You bet.
That was a far more robust conversation. There was a strong desire to not go above three stories, and even three stories along Thorough Street was, was not desirable. They wanted to make sure that there were bike lanes included in that, in the conversation about the, the walkability or how you were going to have that front yard, that there be a provision for bikeways. And the idea of connectivity, that if this is a desirable area to come to, how do we get there? Rather than driving your vehicle, can we improve the walkability or the access other than through your vehicles? So a lot of concern about parking and how that, what that would look like and how we will, I think maybe ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, we will have fewer cars, or maybe we'll have transit, or maybe we'll have some other ways of looking at how we get around. But right now, we are all very automobile oriented. And so a lot of questions about how we are accommodating that both publicly and privately. Thanks.
Great. And so Planning Board Chair Burton Plin. Round two.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So round two. There, there were some more, but there, there were a lot of comments in, in the second session about concern about increasing impervious surface, that surfaces. And that things like reducing impervious surfaces and groundwater recharge should be a sort of front and center in our design principles and, and thinking about how we change uses here. Other people made comments that by allowing potentially more dense use in terms of an actual structure and, and reducing parking requirements and allowing people having a more vibrant, dense usage of property might allow for areas that would otherwise be, you know, like the existing parking areas, largely impervious. As we saw in that, that, that original slide that showed how many parking, how much of this is parking. There was a particular question about with the increased height that could be allowed with a setback from residential areas, how that would play out specifically with respect to the residential area adjacent to, but across the train, the MBTA tracks behind the, essentially behind the CVS. I missed, I didn't get all the street names, but I think that's Thorough Court and some places there. And just wondering how that would play out, whether the fact that the train track is there would allow that building to be closer to that community, or would otherwise, I think, there would be less of a visual barrier between a larger building there and that neighborhood. There was also a lot of emphasis in my second session in terms of putting this as a, reducing things that people could do by right in this district and relying more on special permit to drive desired changes around in energy efficiency and green building and, and principles like that. So rather than, than opening up and, and making more permissive that the zoning rules to allow different models of development, seek those different models, but do it under a permit process that might allow, you know, relaxing requirements in exchange for heat pumps, all-electric and the like, including up to and including waiving affordable housing requirements to be able to achieve those things. I'll turn it over to the next person. Thank you.
Great. Next, Chris, did you facilitate any second session?
I did. And, and again, I, you know, the session was, was fairly positive. Actually, people from the visual perspective actually were, were very comfortable with allowing for that fourth story when it's set far back on a parcel. There were some concerns as we've been hearing about what would be impact on, on, on traffic be? Because if you have a fourth story, that just means that there's more people living there. I, I just wanted to, if actually, to use my minute just to kind of address some of these topics that we've been kind of hearing over and over. One thing that I didn't mention that I really should be mentioning is that the state, for those of you who do not know, has recently adopted new legislation. It's called Housing Choice. And as part of this legislation that's adopted, every MBTA community, which includes Concord, actually has to, it's obligated to have a mixed-use and multifamily Actually has to, it's obligated to have a mixed use in multifamily district around that station. Um, of of it says of a reasonable size and they haven't defined exactly what reasonable size is. Um, so you actually are obligated to have zoning now. Um, so it's a little bit different from when we started this project. When it was sort of nice to have, whereas now I I'd say it's actually critical to have. Um, because it's required in in one of those provisions. And the reason I'm also mentioning that is is that that mixed use zoning has to be by right. Um, and so I know that there's concerns about or some thoughts about making it through a special permit from what I heard. Um, but then that would not satisfy the the legislation. So, you know, I think in my mind, um, we want to address all these concerns and we want to get the zoning right. Um, but I I do want to kind of put that emphasis that that that, um, you know, it is actually required to do so now um for the town. Um, the other thing I would just, I guess I would note in terms of, so traffic always comes up. It's always a major concern. So I just want to give a couple. Comments. I think the way that we can address this in terms of the zoning. Is that we could require projects of a certain size to undergo a a traffic study. Before, you know, prior to to approval and um and if if the depending on what the results are, then there could be sort of mitigation that has to. Be sort of part of of um any condition of approval. I think that's probably the best way to handle that. Um, I will say just generally speaking, as I mentioned at the beginning, we're not talking a huge scale of development here. So I I think. You know, we're not looking at tons of traffic in addition to what's already there today, but I think that would be a way to um hopefully help mollify that concern. And then in terms of parking, you know, again, there are parking requirements. If a developer can't. Create the parking that is necessary for that development as is put into the zoning. Then that person just can't develop that way. Um, so, you know, you can't sort of get around it. You have to have the required parking in this area. So there will be sufficient parking. Um, so I think those are the kind of the big things that I keep hearing. So I just wanted to kind of address those with my time.
Um, thank you. Uh, next is Linda Miller, Planning Board Member.
Had some strong feelings um at in the second session. Primarily around the massing of of the buildings. Um, and I think that there was a um question of is there a, is this an urbanization of? Of Concord versus um say West Concord where the. Buildings may be three stories, but the feeling is much more petite and light. And I think it was really also a question of visualization as presented. Um, my description of of some of the um hypothetical examples is there looks somewhat monolithic. And they don't really look like the buildings in most of Concord. So I think the question is, is it really just this example? Or do we really need to look at what three stories or four stories might mean in a more conquered centric? Visualization. Um, and also the fact that some of the greenscape um wasn't um. Quite as prominent as people thought it might be, especially along Sudbury Road. Um, and finally, um, there was one comment that we really should make sure that all streets will allow double strollers.
Okay. Uh, next on my list, um, Andrew Boardman.
Thanks. I was actually in Chris's session, so the only thing I'll I'll touch upon. Um, there was generally positive um reviews of the the larger buildings with screening. Um, I think that there was a. Better understand, there was at least a a an understanding in our group about where. That could possibly fit um within the parcels that it was really limited to to certain spots where the the setbacks were large enough and that kind of thing. So there was less concern about that. Um, there was a concern though that that would have an unintended consequence about um an impact on density. How many people were being brought to this project, that sort of thing? That was an overarching um thing. Um, and and that generally brought up a concern in more generally about whether. As opposed to making large scale changes, whether smaller scale tweaks in the programs could have a a positive benefit, you know? The the idea being and that this may go along with. Um, the specials, the special permit requirements of simply loosening the requirements a little bit and seeing what happens as opposed to making wholesale changes. Um, was something that came up. Um, uh, emphasis on biking for required infrastructure, which I think somebody else touched upon, and then shade tree and lighting were also concerns um that were brought up. Um, simply because there, you know, if you increase the density, does that, does that increase exterior lighting and? If you're changing around these lots, they're not particularly well shaded now. Is there going to be more emphasis on that in the future and those kind of things? That's that was the crux of our discussion.
Thank you. Um, Erin Stevens.
Um, so I was in Linda's group and I'll just echo a couple of things that um I think really need to be sort of. Brought up to the top again is um really that sort of Concord Village scale, I think, was brought up a lot. Um, and I think also the illustrations were definitely something that people felt um were maybe a little bit not conquered. Um, you get a little bit more um character to them. And also the smaller building structures instead of the larger ones and just having that, you know, that green space and that tree canopy was brought up quite a bit. And I think. Um, that would really help with maybe making people feel it's a little bit more walkable as well.
Thank you. Um, Haley Orbital.
Um, yes, so Nathan and I were in the same room. I don't know if he's gone yet, but um a couple of the notes that I took, uh. I think this has been said, but um kind of feedback on, you know. Improving the kind of tree, green space presented and the design, um feeling like the, as shown. Um, with the three story um proposal, like still feeling like, you know, you would feel very much on top of. Um, the buildings would be on top of you even as a pedestrian walking by. So trying to. Improve the design from a green greenscape perspective. Um. Let's see. Yeah, I mean, I think otherwise it's just a kind of general consensus being, you know, that there is um. You know, eh, an acknowledgement that things can be improved, but this just feels like a lot very fast and. Um, you know, wondering if there's sort of a middle, middle ground here um to to, you know, beautifying the area, but um. You know, just again, feeling like this is, this is a lot to to take in for everybody that that was in my um room.
Great. And then Nathan is um is last.
Yep, so I was I was in there with Haley, so I'll uh just echo some of the things. Um, uh, I'll start with some of the positives. I think most people seem to be uh supportive of of the mixed use uh developments. Um, uh, as Haley said, they they did agree that uh, you know, the current uh arrangement, particularly with the Crosby's. Uh, market area uh could be improved. Um, one thing that came up. Was that uh, you know, based just on the drawings and understanding that they are just conceptual drawings, but something to think about is just that the. The streetscape part of it, the the buildings were basically, you know, perfectly. In a row and there was no staggering, so no depth change along the frontage um as you might see in other parts of town. Um, and uh there was positive in terms of allowing for more sort of little A affordable and also uh, you know, actual affordable housing. Uh, that these develop types of developments might allow for. Um, but, you know, again, there, yes, we did get feedback that just in terms of the scale. Uh, of of some of what was being discussed didn't seem to be in keeping, not only with the surrounding area, but with Concord in general. Um, then of course statistical parking and uh traffic uh comments that have already been made.
Great. So. That's it for the wrap up, Chris.
Well, thank you, everyone, for for those um. For those points, it's really great to hear kind of what the feedback was. Um, and, you know, it'll take a little while to to digest that. Um, I guess the one, you know, I I think I addressed earlier kind of some of my initial thoughts as it relates to the traffic and parking. Um, in terms of kind of sounds like some of the groups had some concerns about. Kind of the 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 visualizations, the diagrams and and what that actually conveys. And so I think that's, you know, those points are well taken. Um, and I think in some cases, maybe they weren't um necessarily illustrating kind of the intent of what kind of a three story building would be and and what that would look like. Um, I would just say, you know, one example that I I had mentioned in my group where someone asked me was, um. You know, what is a building that, you know, this zoning would kind of fit with? And so if you just Google on Google Maps, um. Twenty three Main Street in Ashland, that's like a fairly new building. Um, and it's it's that's 38 feet and it's kind of articulated in a way that the zoning sort of requires kind of where that articulation is. And so I think that's just an example that you could kind of look at. Um, and that's the type of scale that maybe does a better job um of of sort of conveying. Um, and and that's separate from kind of the streetscape aspect. And and that's something that I I also noted to to my group was, you know. Private development can only do so much and and part of sort of the the work has to be done by the public sector, by the town itself. Um, where there are public street trees, um, and maybe they need to have new new street trees, et cetera. So. There are opportunities and in our vision plan, we sort of memorialize some of the things as it relates to. Um, bicycle connectivity and pedestrian connectivity and a lot of those things really should be undertaken. Um, it needs to be undertaken by the town. Um, and so. Um, you know, as it relates to the zoning, it it really governs what's happening kind of in the private sec. With the private development with a little bit um potentially for for um change in the public realm, but it really is both both sides and needs needs to work on it. Um, so with that, um, I, you know, I I guess I just want to again, thank everyone for tonight. Um, in terms of where we are and what the next steps are. Um, I I know everyone was taking note, um, that we have a lot of notes that are be taken. I will review all those. Um, I obviously heard a lot of feedback tonight. Um, saw a number of concerns. So again, we'll we'll try to incorporate as much of that as we can. Into the draft zoning and the draft design guidelines. Um, and then I'm sure we'll be kind of coming back again to to present this. Um, whether that's as part of a public hearing or or some intermediary step, um, we'll we'll figure that out over the next couple of months. Uh, Elizabeth, I'll just hand it back to you if you. Want to close the meeting or for all.
Um, um, I I appreciate everybody's attendance. We had um. Well, 11 people who had to be here as um Planning Board Members and Town Staff, um, but there were a total of 73 people on this meeting. Um, so I'd like to thank everybody. Um, if you have follow up, um, just thoughts or um questions. Um, you can email them um to me and I'll make sure that they get sent um on to Chris. Um, so my email address is just e hughes at conquered ma dot G O V. And then I'll turn it over to Burton if you have any closing comments.
Well, that's it. Just to, uh, well, I do the process from here, Chris touched on it, but also. In terms of what the board will be doing is considering, uh, you know, revisions to this over the next few uh or or over scheduled regular planning board meetings. Um, it'll be part, it'll be on our agenda. And then, you know, any any final adoption of this would be subject to uh vote at town meeting. Um, or, you know, at the next town meeting or in 2022 town meeting. Um, Elizabeth and and Chris, thank you very much for pulling this all together. I know that putting this virtual meeting together was. Or or forum together was was a a lot was involved. So thank you.
You have a good night, everyone.
Yeah.
Night, thank you.
Thank you.